Good morning to our friends joining us virtually. I would like to welcome you to our final Town Hall meeting for Academic Year 2024. And as we gather this morning for this final meeting of this full year, I want to take the opportunity to express my deep gratitude to each and every one of you for the support and collaboration that you have provided to me during this year of transition. Last August 31st, I asked you as a community to decide whether the status quo would suffice or you would join me on the journey to improve and advance our excellence as a college. And as I suspected, you joined me on that journey. I'm so proud of the work that we've done. This has happened through collaboration. This has happened through communication and a sense of community in particular. We had a very positive tenure reaccreditation. So much to be proud of from every single division and department within this institution. I'm incredibly proud to be part of this college. As you know, I've been connected to it for over four decades, and we have a lot to take pride and celebrate. Today, I'm joined by Vice President Handling, Vice President Ogden. They will deliver updates from their respective areas. In my comments, we'll talk about some recent events that we've had an opportunity to participate in and have particularly raised the profile of the Community College of Rhode Island. I'll talk about some federal ERLOCs that we were on the positive end of receiving. We're going to recognize faculty that just received tenure and promotion. There's some personnel announcements. And finally, I can't help it. I have a great vice president for administration, and I will not get out of Town Hall without speaking about budgets. So with that, we will get underway. Thank you. Thank you very much. This is, of course, incredibly busy time of year. I think I have something starting next week, almost every single day. So it will be two weeks of very hectic days, but very fulfilling days. It's the best time of the year for me. I really enjoy it, and I'm looking forward to seeing many of you at these programs and ceremonies that honor the accomplishments of our students. I would like to start with just a recap of Professional Development Day. Particularly recognize Raekwon Graves. Is Raekwon here? Well, I'm happy to do her presentation. Raekwon and the DEI Council. I just can't say enough. The room was electric. Our speaker was phenomenal, Dr. Whitaker. He left us with some certainly incentives to make sure that this equity is at the center of what we do, and it has to begin at the top. So again, I will restate your hearing from me that we will center all our work on diversity, equity, and inclusivity. And I look forward to the work ahead. And again, I want to thank our incredible DEI Council. Also, we had such a wonderful speaker. I think everyone enjoyed the day, and it was good to see us all together. I also had recently an opportunity to travel to Washington, DC. Amy Kemp and I joined Representatives Seth Magazin and Dave Amo for Rhode Island Days down in the Capitol. So we were invited to attend the Library of Congress and heard numerous speakers, including the Undersecretary for Education, Amy Lloyd, who recognized us. We were kind of in the middle of the room. I don't think she even knew we were there, but said, "What a great partnership," as an example, nationally, the Community College and Electric Boats is. So it was very nice to be recognized in that setting, and we had an opportunity to meet with our congressional delegation. And again, hear many leaders from within Congress as to the state and affairs. Staying on the federal front, CCRI received two ERLOCs. They are called formerly congressionally-directed spending. We received nearly $1.2 million. We were notified a couple of weeks ago. $814,000 of this money will go to community first. And some of you may recall, President Hughes, this was a very strong, passionate program that she was advocating for. And this is where we take the Community College right into the community, where we will be working with organizations such as Boys and Girls Club and engaging families right where they live and assisting them in getting connected to CCRI, including parents, where we will be offering a Parents University. Can I see my friend Carol Patton here? And we've had lots of conversations about this work. So this is a really exciting and generous gift that the college received. We also received $350,000 for justice-involved pathways. Rhode Island has a recidivism rate that we would like to see improved. We have been involved with the correctional department for many, many years. We enjoy our work, and we currently have a really centerpiece program with the Women's Correctional Facility, where we are teaching advanced manufacturing and recognized regionally for that work. This group that we are also working with that will then will receive some of these funds is entitled More Than Our Worse. And this is headed by a doctoral-prepared man who served in the justice system. He had been incarcerated, and he came out, and his life work is really on reentry. So we expect to be having some updates for you on this area, which is so exciting to be involved with. So we're very grateful to our congressional delegation for this year's award. As soon as you get notified of this year's award, you have to put in for next year's award. So we're asking for about $6 million for next year. We're looking to build out the Allied Health Lab on the Lincoln Campus. We are looking to renovate the historic greenhouse structure on the United States. And we are getting some widespread support for that. So this is really exciting, that our students can actually work and grow vegetables and flowers. This is, I hope, something that will get funded for sure. And then we have technology updates on all four campuses that we are seeking some federal dollars to assist in that. So those are the upcoming. We will have to wait almost a year to know what we get, but we are always happy when we are remembered by our congressional delegation. Last week, we had the Post-Secondary Education Council meeting, and I am happy to share with you that we had 12 faculty members receive tenure from the council, as well as moved to associate professors. And there are Roger Hart for physics, Mary Kitts Miller nursing, Gillian Ryan from the library, Sabine Maritz for biology, Daniel Petron for social sciences, Amanda Petrus chemistry, Laura Acro chemistry, Julie Rosendez nursing, Aaron Tran mathematics, Joseph Silver art, art history and design, Louis Tschetek psychology, and Krista Williamson performing arts. So congratulations. I'm also happy to share that we had three faculty members who were being promoted to full professor. And William, or as we know him, Bill Delesio, English, Lynn Jackson, Human Services, and Jean McCall, Nursing. Please join me in that. Next, I'd like to do some personnel updates. Before I begin with talking about each one of these individuals, I do want to share with you, we are in a transitional period. The council has renewed a contract for me for one year. I expect that within the next three months, we will have a formation of a search committee to look for the next president of the college. So, but, and I will not take Vice President Handley's spotlight away. I will let her deliver her remarks. But I knew when I invited my dear friend and colleague to come and join me for this year that I would just have her for really the academic year. And I'm so grateful for all that she has contributed to this college and to me personally. And I'm also thrilled to announce that Barbara Nolan will serve as interim vice president for Academic Affairs during this time period of search. We will have, as our NIEC report so highlighted, there will be two positions that are pretty high-profile that the college will be looking for over the next year, and that is president, permanent president, and permanent vice president. So I think it's very important that a president gets to select the permanent replacement for academic affairs, and I could not have anyone better than Dean Barbara Nolan, besides, besides, throughout this career. I'd also like to welcome Kellyanne Wright. Kellyanne, you're here. There you are. You can just wave to people. Kellyanne joined us yesterday. So she's a season team member now. We're so happy that Kellyanne accepted the position of Director of Marketing and Communications. Had an opportunity to meet with her yesterday. We've got an exciting year coming up. We are going to be celebrating the 60th anniversary of the college. It's probably time that we do some rebranding. So I think you're going to see and hear a lot from Kelly over the next several months and into the year. But Kelly, we're really very, very happy that you are with us, and we look forward to great things getting us up there and promoting. As I said to Kelly, the Community College of Rhode Island, we used to think of ourselves as the only show in town. And for those of us that have been associated with the college for a long time, they're the largest, one of the largest community colleges. Connecticut claims it, but we know we're still. Public two-year institution. But what we're seeing now is that we are competing with four-year institutions. We're competing with career and technical colleges. We're competing with online schools. So it's really important that we get our brand out there. We share the good news of the work that we do every day. And we're no longer the only show in town. So we have to get into that space. So thank you, Kellyanne, for joining us. And I'd also like to thank Tim Pullman. Is Tim here? Not today. Well, Tim, and many of you know Tim. He's been with us for several years. Tim has been promoted to deputy chief of our campus police. He was sworn in yesterday. So I was not able to attend the meeting after spilling something on myself in the car. So I would like to virtually send to Tim my heartfelt congratulations and wish him much success in this role. I have no doubt that he will be a very successful deputy chief. And finally, congratulations to Lindsay Gubish. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. Lindsay has been appointed the Assistant Dean of Library Sciences. So I'd like to thank all four individuals for saying yes. And please join me in a round of applause. I will conclude my remarks on the budget. And before I go into the budget, I do want to talk about FAFSA a little bit. Not sure if Kelly Marcy is here. Probably not. She's probably already trying to get these forms all settled. But just, you probably saw yesterday in the, in Nadwa. Yeah, the team, Lindsay was here. Thank you. Thank you very much for all that you're doing to help us through the simplified FAFSA process. Yesterday's journal, Front Page News, was the outlining of the impact on colleges in the state of Rhode Island for the simplified FAFSA. FAFSA reform was, the bill was passed in 2020 to take effect for the class of 2024. Lots happened between 2020 and 2024, including a pandemic, and the rollout definitely was not smooth. The Department of Education is working very hard between loan forgiveness and a new FAFSA and a whole bunch of other electronic misfires in the wiring of how it pulls data, et cetera. So we knew that FAFSA would be delayed from October 1st until December 31st. We actually thought we would be in a good position because it was going to impact maybe more on the four-year schools who have to prepare financial aid packages earlier than we do. We have students that register late into the summer. However, we're now into April, and we are starting to see the impact. This has not resolved, although it is improving. I will give you some numbers as of a couple of weeks ago, and I think these numbers have improved. And I'll look to my colleagues in Student Affairs. But we were down a couple of weeks ago, 63% in FAFSA completion. And that is students actually filling out the FAFSA form. It's now electronic. It connects into IRS. So there's just those issues that teaching people how to access the documentation. And then there were some back-end wiring issues that were at the Department of Education. So I say this just to alert you that we will be providing updates throughout the summer. This is another added challenge as we already have open enrollment, and we are enrolling students up to, including through the first weeks of classes. And we will be keeping an eye on this critical situation. It affects everything. Students are not eligible for prom if they don't fill out FAFSA. They cannot get student loans, et cetera. So we're not alone. Rhode Island is, I think, sixth in the nation in terms of the highest rate of completion. However, that is nothing to fall home about. So we will keep you up to date on that. But I am very, very grateful to our financial aid team. We're being led by one of the best in Kelly Marcy. And thank you for your work. In September, I'm going to move to the budget. In September, I, well, we submitted a budget that was an unconstrained budget. And what that means is that we asked for programming that was not part of the operating budget that went above. It was about $4 million. It was for a couple of programs to help with the redesign and developmental math and English. And, you know, quickly became clear that unconstrained budgets were not really going to be a part of the equation, that we would be getting a current service-level budget for fiscal year '25, which we also submitted. Our current service-level budget, when we received it, was about almost just under $1 million below. It was below what we need to operate. And then some other things started to happen. So we found out that our insurance costs were going up by about $1 million that we expect to, well, they've gone up over $1 million over five years, and it was 1.67 million, is that right? So our insurance costs have dramatically increased. Our COLAs are $900,000, which was not covered by the current service level, which we will cover, of course. We're contractually obligated, and we would want to do that. We're down 15.5% in enrollment since 2019, before the pandemic. To 2024, it's a 15.5% decline, and that equates into almost a $5 million hold that we were able to cover with herd funds and the COVID relief dollars. And as we all know, those funds are going away. So we're working as a team to make sure that we are covering that and covering that deficit, as well as preparing future budgets that sort of breaksize the budget to the college that we have right now, while Kellyanne and her team does work to get those students back. The good news is that we continue to, I think we're going into our eighth semester of semester-over-semester increase in enrollment. So while we had a dramatic decline, and our comeback has been steady, but it's been slow. So I don't want to sugarcoat that, and it does require attention. And we are monitoring that very closely. As I said, we're also looking at, we're also looking at making sure that the budget is reflective of the size of the college as it stands, what we expect over the next couple of years. Another item that came up that we were not necessarily expecting to the magnitude of the increase was the janitorial services. So in August, we were notified that we were going up by $130,000, and this was the livable wage bill that was passed by our legislatures in '22. And we totally support this bill, and we have to pay for our janitorial services. So that was another, almost $1 million that was not expected. We're also seeing an increase in student receivables. I don't like the word, but we call bad debt. During the pandemic, these outlier bills were paid for through federal dollars. That is not happening any longer. Students were not used to having us pester them. So we are seeing about $0.5 million in that decline. Our medical insurance went up about $407,000, which was a 10% increase. We were given a value to plan our budget for fiscal year '25 of 5%. So we were already a little bit behind in that. And we have some critical technology needs of $300,000. I have been meeting, and many of you may have seen me testify. I testified before the House Finance. I testified before the Senate Finance Committee. I meet regularly with the governor, and Rich and I just met with the governor last Tuesday. So in all of these opportunities, I, you know, I share this information with them. It is, he was very clear that these are going to be challenging times over the next year. And he knows what our situation is. And I will continue to advocate to close that current service-level gap. I think this part, am I done with my slides? Okay. I do want to end on a note, though. There are other colleges that are far worse off than we are. And I am very grateful for the leadership of Vice President Sullivan and the team in finance, and for all of you for coming together. But we will have to put, as I, basketball playoffs are on TV right now, so we'll say a full-court press, right? We have to put a full-court press on to make sure that every student that is interested in CCRI knows the benefit, the value of coming. And I want to also thank everybody who participated in the open house that we had recently. I think we had over 600 people come in. I was here, and it took me two hours to get around the room. It was one of the best Saturdays I've spent in a long time. So thank you to Student Affairs and all those that participated. Faculty Pathways, this is so incredible that students can come in and be directed right to a department and to experts, faculty experts, to help them make those decisions. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to my dear friend, Vice President Allison Hymn.
Allison, thank you. I'd like to start by thanking once again President Costigan for inviting me four years ago during COVID to join the CCRI family. I have to thank Greg LaPointe for enabling Rosemary and I to connect as professional colleagues and certainly as friends. But that was a wonderful experience despite the boundaries that being many thousands of miles away, you know, entail. How do you summarize a wonderful academic year in a few short sentences and highlights? Well, it's impossible. But I want to start by certainly being very grateful for the relationships that through this particular in-person role I've been able to develop with faculty, chairs, certainly the Academic Affairs Team, the senior leadership team, and all of the directors and leaders of the various administrative committees here. Opening day was a singular highlight that I will not forget ever, particularly to see the first CCRI alum, Dr. Rosemary Costigan, become the interim president. It was pretty wonderful every day after that, but quite an outstanding accomplishment. And recognition for Rosemary and for professional academia. I look back to the multiple levels and opportunities that I've had during the academic year for participation. First and foremost, meetings with students, anywhere from in classrooms, in the halls. But I tend to use the elevator much more than I ever have in my previous life because it's hard to have a conversation walking in the corridors or on the ramp. But the elevator, I got to know quite a few students in a few short minutes. Being here to celebrate the accomplishments of faculty, including promotion and tenure, the Faculty Innovation Awards, the Professor of American Art, and seeing growth in the certification of faculty here who are committed to quality online and hybrid programs. That is an important cornerstone of who CCRI is and who we will continue to be. It was amazing to witness the development of the Faculty Senate and to see firsthand the dedication of senators and committee participants and to observe the robust growth of this important governance body. The Chair's Council will always, in my mind, be memorable because of the outstanding group that we currently have serving in that role. Difficult and challenging role in many ways. But at the bottom of that service is the unquestioning commitment to academic quality. The Curriculum Review Committee is seeing new programs, the expansion of the educated person metrics throughout the general education curriculum, the creation of many timely certificate offerings that are meeting needs for professions and for employment. Classroom visits, particularly Bill Delesio's classroom and Eileen Jane's classrooms. Attending our theater production of The Larrabee Project, a powerful performance and a very unique interpretation all around. The Art, Art History, and Design Department gallery openings have been a highlight, as has the student art sale. I thought a lot of student pottery pieces. They're small, but to take home with me. The progress of emerging assessments processes led by Lauren Webb and Leslie Kildore. The Friday, February 16th performance entitled Jazz, Shakespeare, and Social Justice that was part of our Life History Month celebration. The external accreditation and reaccreditation of our professional programs in healthcare, cybersecurity, and supporting self-studies currently underway for and completed for physical therapy, massage therapy, and the business programs coming up soon. Dental Game Day was one of the most fun days of my entire time here. Every one of the faculty members in the dental departments went out of the way and added on incredible hours to have this regional, which I hope President Costigan will continue as the annual event. Federal and state grants in early childhood, advanced manufacturing, and healthcare, to name a few. The opportunity to work collaboratively with Annabatty and the transfer team, which includes Beth Anish and Rebecca Heimel, to institutionalize and enhance transfer opportunities for our students to URI and RIC. Our students who transfer from the Association of Arts here, they are fully recognized as the junior state of students. That's an incredible accomplishment. We continue to advance the academic master plan implementation, and all the goals are on track and directly aligned with the college's strategic plan. Finally, our NIEC visit and preliminary exit report given by Chair Lynn Clenn. I've been. I've been a part of those visits and on the receiving end of feedback and I couldn't have been prouder and in some ways surprised, as I shared with many faculty, at how extremely positive congratulatory they were during the delivery. Finally, a big thank you to everyone here for your kindness, your generosity in helping me learn about CCRI and about higher education in Rhode Island. So please know that from San Diego when I return, there will always be a fan of CCRI looking fondly and I'm going to be checking in on how things are going. Thank you so much from the bottom of my heart for everything you've done to make this such a wonderful experience. The final guest to respond is coming right up and I love graduations. I was sharing in the faculty meeting that I often get teary. It was a real problem when I was, as you will be as president, the major speaker and introducer and orchestrator at that event. It's with great excitement that I will be here in person for the 59th commencement exercises. Commencement will be held on May 16 at the Amica Mutual Pavilion. Faculty are to arrive by 3:00 PM, please. A few housekeeping details. Commencement is such a special time for faculty to recognize their students' tremendous work and accomplishments over the years. It's a time for reflection and celebration. Faculty participation is greatly encouraged. This is our chance to send our alums off feeling good about themselves and all of the work that they did. It's important for us all to stay involved throughout the entirety of the last student to receive the same respect and acknowledgement as the first. So just a little pleading to, it's hard because we have large classes to acknowledge, but I can't wait and I look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison, and thank you for your service to CCRI. I will now turn it over to Vice President Lee Sackton, who will review institutional hybrid human resources and OD upgrades.
Thank you. There are two things that I'm going to talk with you about today. One is our manager's essential training that the division is developing, that I'll tell you more about the details of it. And the other is the 2024 performance evaluation process. So first, manager's essential training. So based on the feedback that the department has been getting, we really recognize that a couple of different things. Sometimes people come into the college who maybe have done, maybe have been a manager in other places, but there are things that are very specific to working in a public institution, to working in a unionized institution, to working at CCRI writ large, that people really say that they could benefit from knowing and understanding. We have a new staff onboarding process, which we're in our fourth cohort of, I think. Someone can correct me. Sounds good. Okay. And that, what that does is invite, invites new staff to work with their managers on a training program, but also creates a cohort for incoming new staff, no matter where they're entering the college, and to do kind of a CCRI 101. I think that one of the things we realized, that's great. We're really happy that we're doing that. That's for everyone who's coming into the college. But we've also gotten a lot of feedback about from managers, whether they're coming into the college for the first time or if they're getting promoted into a management position, that they need to have tools that they can, and training that they can rely on that will help them succeed in their work. So we are, Amy, could you, thank you. Oh, I forgot about, so in the big picture. We see this very consistent with our strategic planning goal number three. We want to be providing professional development, education and training, and also to continue to create a culture of assessment and feedback. So we feel like both of these initiatives within the division really support the strategic plan and are embedded in actually the division's strategic plan that we have now built. So, I'm a manager. So here's the way that we see it right now. So I guess I would just want to say this is subject to change and to change as we continue to kind of iterate it. But what we want to do is build with, probably going to have seven sessions or components to the new manager's training. And we are going to offer one component each week on a rotating basis. So if you're a new manager coming in, maybe you're starting at progressive discipline grievance and hearings, but you're going to end up doing all seven of them. So it's an opportunity over a period of, we're going to, we're thinking that what we want to do is for people and new managers and going to new or being promoted or coming in, you know, to say within the first three months, we want you to complete all seven of these. And we think that it's really, it's really important that it's possible. It's really important that it's regular and it's really important that we require it, frankly. And we also feel that it's an opportunity for people who aren't managers, but maybe see themselves as managers further in their career at CCRI. You know, what a great way to find out what it is to be a manager and to develop a skillset that potentially could position you for a new professional opportunity. So there's going to be more on this. We're hoping, our plan is to finalize it over the next six weeks and roll it out over the summer. And there'll be more to come on that, but you can see the areas that we're working to focus on and we'll definitely be asking for feedback from people as they're participating. And we plan to just kind of take that feedback and iterate it as we go. But definitely, we're super, we're really, really excited about this and, you know, I hope that it's going to be responsive to the feedback that we've been getting and providing tools that people really feel that they need. So that will move on to performance evaluation process. So I have to put on my glasses now because I have stuff I have to read. Okay, so why do we do this? We talked, we've talked about this a lot. You know, it's creating dialogue between supervisors and managers and their direct reports. It's important for people to know what both areas are and create professional development goals. And it's also really important that we see how our work is, drives the entire college forward. You know, one of the things that I, you know, we talk a lot about in the strategic plan that everyone can see themselves in it. I think that the performance evaluation process is one of those ways that we can really work to identify that. Okay, so the timeline here. So if you are a supervisor, you have received the DocuSign, the evaluation forms. We've already offered a couple of drop-in sessions and we have one coming up at Lincoln the third, and another WebEx, June 7. I think I would just really want to add is that Ray Kwan Race is available for people one-on-one. So if you kind of, if you're stuck, ask for help. He's available and he's, and he's very eager to help. Let me just, because I maybe have a, just pause here for a minute. This process and how it improves every year is, you know, Ray Kwan's been a huge part of that work. Peter Varsley is working hand in hand with Ray Kwan. So honestly, the two of them could be up there giving this presentation and I could just be in the audience because they've really done great work. Just super quickly, I want to address a couple of things. So this is the DocuSign. I think some people will recall two years ago when the DocuSign wasn't set up really, it had a couple of problems. So for example, it wouldn't save work, the access to the evaluation would expire. Those issues have been fixed. So don't fear the DocuSign. The DocuSign will not expire on you and it will save your work, which I do think is helpful because, you know, you have time to work on something when something comes up. But I really appreciate that that's, those issues have been fixed because I do think with those fixes, it is a much better tool than just using a PDF. So, oh, so sorry. I definitely did the wrong type. So this, this, the performance evaluation applies to anyone who is hired on or before July 1, 2023. So if you have an employee who's in a probationary period, that's not, that's not what this is for. This is a post-provisionary period evaluation tool. And so there's, we really want people to give up, give true feedback because that's the way people are going to grow. So if you give someone, we all know it has one, two and three, and whether or not that's kind of the right amount of choices to have, I think, is an issue for debate, but not this year. If you give someone a one or a two, you need to put in a comment as to why. They need to understand what, what it is, where they need to grow. We really also want to encourage you, if you put in a three, put in a comment. Tell someone what they're doing great. I mean, that's such a, that's such a validating thing and also it's, it's a way of identifying how people are developing and growing. So really want to encourage both. And again, if you're stuck, reach out to Ray Kwan. And if there's employees that have twos, you should, you should be sure to meet with them. You should really meet with all of the people that you review. But if someone has an overall rating of a two, you definitely need to meet with them to come up with a plan for just addressing their growth areas. And employees that do need to sign, what you'll also find just generally is that your banner, employee dashboard, contains a lot of information that you're, that will be helpful to completing the form. On the HR website, which is n/performanceevaluations, there's also instructions there. So if you're feeling frustrated or whatever, please go to the website or reach out because we're here to help. I think people know that we have a bonus program for our PSA union members and that requires 100% of the PSA employees to be reviewed by July 31st. So we are prioritizing the completion of PSA employees' performance evaluations July 31st and then everyone's needs to be done by August 31st. So here's our goal for this year. Yes! So here's, here's the good news, everyone. And I mean this, three years ago, we were in the 40s in terms of completion of performance evaluations. Last year, we hit 87%. So this is possible and we're really going to be focused on it. And I think what an achievement for the college to get to 100% completion of performance evaluations. And I absolutely think that we can do it. So thank you and I'm going to go back over to President Costigan.
Before I move to questions, I just also want to take a moment to thank everyone who's either purchased a ticket or a table to Friday night's fundraising opportunities. This is our eighth annual fundraising event for the college and the advancement team is working very, very diligently to make sure that we have a beautiful venue up at the athletic campus. And I look forward to seeing you all there Friday night and enjoying a wonderful time. So thank you again for all you do in support of our students. Former Congressman Cicilline has agreed to host one more time as our auctioneer and we're very grateful for his, for his willingness to do that. So at this time, I'd like to open it up to questions from the audience and then we can move to questions from online. But please, questions?
Nothing. Nothing. There are no questions currently online, but you could be typing now.
Oh, here we go. Leslie.
Hi. I've lost track, but when is the red bell for Student Fair is going to be done? And...
No, I mean, it's the last one. In this leadership role, I correctly, but I love to give good news. So I believe we're a little ahead of schedule and we're looking at December 25.
We are ahead of schedule.
Yeah.
We are on budget.
Yep.
Despite the fact that the elevator is late.
Elevators are always late.
I believe if, in fact, TKE elevator cooperates, we have major pieces of furniture that have to be purchased over the next 30 days. That will probably be the last phase of getting the space ready to go. And hopefully, we're looking at winter, spring, 2025, meaning January to April.
It's good news. It looks like it's going to be a beautiful space. I see Vice President LaPointe's here, Associate Vice President Amy Cather. I know the entire Student Fair's team is anxiously awaiting that and for you really, you dug in and made the best of close quarters, let's say that, over at the Field House. But this is going to be a really beautiful space.
And when we do move, we'll have some very attractive space open for rent or lease in the gym. Swing space at the Village.
That's right, the Village. So looks good, Leslie, for delivery. I also want to, I'm not sure if some of you have seen in our daily newsletter, but our criminal justice program, they have opened up a crime lab that is in Providence campus. So under the leadership of Professor Mark England and again with David's team, I had an opportunity to go through there. I'm so happy. I know this is something that was really desired and I'd like to recognize Cheyenne Copeland as well to help facilitate it and acknowledge it. We got it done and it's a really, really good space. It's being led by one of the best in Professor England. And so I think we'll, we'll hear a lot more about this, this opportunity to grow program. So, yes, a question with that.
Yes, we will know. We have a question from somebody watching online. Will the manager training be offered for current program directors and managers?
Yes. Yes. So it'll, yes. So if you're currently at the college and you're in a management role, you would be welcome to come and participate. More than welcome, encouraged.
Any other questions?
Yes. It's from, here we none.
Oh, yes, yes.
I just have a comment first. Thank you all and thank you, Amy, for your service. We appreciate it. President Costigan, you've created an atmosphere based on the slogan of say yes. So there are so many beautiful opportunities to say yes to with all the initiatives coming to the college. I would love to see these opportunities published and volunteer from the community at, you know, being able to participate in that because I'm pretty sure under all what you discussed today, that we're going to all be to band together to make a mark.
Yes.
Staff assembly, nominations.
Yes, please. Yes. So we've received 14 nominations so far. We'd love to receive more. I'm opening the call for everybody in the room. I'm opening the call for everybody in the room. Please nominate a peer, nominate yourself. Would love to see your name on the list. The nominations will close on the 21st, so.
Thank you. Thank you for the reminder, David, and that's an opportunity to say yes. You know, leadership is, leadership's tough. It doesn't matter what level of leadership you're at, it is, it can be challenging, and it's important that if you want your voice, if you want your voice to be heard, that you can come involved and become solutions. We all have to, you know, we all have to climb mountains, and it's really important that we have a, a strategy of how we're going to do it. So most of the time, the problems are very clear, we know what they are. The challenge is deciding on how we get them solved. So one of the best ways, of course, is being involved in governance, both in the Senate and in the Assembly. It is, it's remarkable in just a short period of time how this governance structure has come together, and I'm very optimistic for the future that there will be a highly functioning governance process within the community college. Thank you, Natalie, but thank you for your service.
You referenced the NECHI process, but I think it bears repeating where we are. We have the draft report, which we're not at liberty to share widely because it's only a draft, and ultimately, it will be presented to the NECHI board for them as commissioners to approve. And, but it is, it very much reflects the comments that were made at the exit interview, and it really acknowledges the incredible transformation that has occurred here over the 10-year period of NECHI. So you all just knocked it out of the park in terms of preparation. It was extremely impressive, and it required a lot of homework and behind the scenes. So you will be, you will be going before the commission, and I can almost 100% guarantee that it will be adopted enthusiastically, but at that point, you'll be able to share all of the wonderful details, and I think you will feel very proud of yourselves.
Everyone should, it's been a phenomenal journey. It's always good to highlight yourself in terms of the accomplishments, and that was just a pleasure, really, for the process of writing this self-study. And as I said, I think I had been involved, came in in the middle of one accreditation. So it's probably been four that I have had opportunity to participate in, and some of them can be quite painful because when the standards are not met, you know, you have to be a little creative and so forth, but we did not have to be creative. We were able to just highlight the creativity of this, of this group of faculty and staff that do their work every day on behalf of our students and putting the best possible programming out there. And I'm just really proud, and as an opportunity to share also the improvement with transfer as Dr. Hamon referred to. And we've made great progress with our colleagues at Rhode Island College particularly. URI is strong, and, and we're, again, it's putting investments where they matter. The college, Vice President LaPointe, recognized we needed to do better, we needed to have a better transfer process, and we created a team with Anna Batty and, and her, her team to really focus in on improving those transfer pathways. Early on, when I came in as Vice President for Academic Affairs, I went to President Hughes. We had, assessment is a daunting undertaking. We needed to do a lot of work, and I felt it was really important that we dedicated some resources and got the right people in, and that's when we expanded institutional effectiveness. We certainly, our Phil Gordon, the team, and Dr. Lauren Webb, who's been with me almost from the beginning, you know, these are, these are roles that are critically important, and, and that's what leaders are charged with doing. You need to identify where the gaps are and try to come up with a remedy. And I think that those investments have come back to us multifold. So thank you to, thank you to everybody again who said yes. It doesn't seem possible, it seems like it was yesterday, August 31st, that I was standing downstairs in front of everyone, you know, very nervous, and you've made this year just a complete joy. And I, I want to say thank you before we end the, the meeting, and look forward to seeing you, hopefully Friday night. Look forward to seeing you at the different ceremonies that honor our students and faculty and staff over the next couple of weeks, and then culminating with, with our graduation, our commencement. So it's the first time that an alum will be leading the commencement exercises, and it's pretty special. So I do hope that you all will mark your calendars for May 16. But thank you again. Have a great weekend.